clay feet and that he can then serve and help you in that way. And, you know, there are many moments like the Camino is fraught with metaphor, cheap and meaningful, profound. And the whole life is sort of revealed in that walking. And the dynamics are constantly revealed and then challenged and, you know, reassembled. That's what I find so profound about walking. And the first time I walked it, I walked alone. And I learned all this stuff about my relationship to myself. And this time I learned about my relationship to myself with my son, you know? And likewise for him. And I think at the end, he felt, you know, I think my son had a very difficult, as I did, very difficult schooling experience. If you don't do well in school, you are made, you know, one is made to feel they're not up to something.
Oh, yeah.
He wore, you know, he earned his way across that country in a way that no one can take that away from us. You know, at the end, the pilgrimage ends in Santiago de Compostela, which is about 50 miles from the sea. And he then said, I'm going to go on to Finisterre, which is the ocean, 50 miles, three days walk beyond. And the idea that he wanted to just complete that and go beyond what I had done, you know, that's hardwired into every parent, that our child go beyond us, you know? And that he did that for himself, that couldn't have made me happier that he would want to do. And just feeling the accomplishment in that, that no one can take away. You know, yes, you're just walking and it means nothing to the wider world. And yet there's something very real and profound that happens internally.
When you get to Santiago and you're trying to find the way to, I think, to get into the church, many of the doors are locked. Um, you're on this last day, you're kind of there. And you're right that there are these bursts of sobs that you have. What's going on?
Oh, I think there was so much happening. I was so relieved to have made it. I was so relieved that he had made it and that my responsibility was complete. And I was so sad that it was over, that this bubble of time would never come again and that it was over. So I was just everything and just, just the release of emotion and for emotion's sake. And I loved that feeling, you know? There's something about melancholy that is luscious in a certain way. And to finally just let down when you reach a goal is, you know, it's complicated mixed feelings, you know? I didn't want it to be over. My body sure did, but my emotions, I didn't want this to be over with my son.
The book is Walking with Sam, A Father, A Son, and 500 Miles Across Spain. And the author is writer, director, actor Andrew McCarthy. Andrew, thanks for the time, much appreciated.
Oh, thank you.
And we have an excerpt of the book at hereandnow.org. Hey, this is Steve Inskeep. One of the things you can count on from NPR and this station, we've got your back when it comes to reporting the news, bringing you facts you can count on. And one thing this station counts on is contributions to keep it going. You can help by donating a vehicle you no longer need, which is free to you, easy to do, and could mean hundreds of dollars' worth of support. Thanks.
To donate your vehicle, go to radioiq.org. And thanks.
Radio IQ programming is supported by Roanoke Parks and Recreation, offering programs in arts, wellness, outdoors, and athletics for all ages and interests. Details at playroanoke.com.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Staples, with supplies and services to get business done, no matter where it gets done, from ink and toner cartridges to technology like laptops and networking accessories. More at Staples stores or staples.com.
It's Here and Now. We want to take some time to remember the biologist who made the world fall in love with this sound. Roger Payne introduced us to the Symphony of the Sea back in 1970 with the groundbreaking album Songs of the Humpback Whale. It became the most popular nature recording in history. It also helped energize a movement to protect marine mammals. Roger Payne died in his Vermont home over the weekend. And we want to remember him in his own words. So here he is reflecting on the monumental album and his love for humpback whales.
The first time I saw a whale up close, I was working at Tufts University and I heard an announcement that a whale had washed ashore on Revere Beach. And I decided I wanted to see it. By the time I got there, somebody had cut its flukes off and they were missing. Somebody else had carved their initials in the side of it. And somebody else had stuffed a cigar butt in the blowhole. And I just, I stood looking at this animal. It was perfectly clear to me that nature was under the most appalling assaults. And most people didn't seem to know anything about it. And I thought, what could I do? And I thought whales, that's what I could do. There was this fellow in Bermuda named Frank Watlington, who worked for the Navy doing something secret. And he had heard sounds that he thought were whales. And they were quite elaborate. And so I went with my former wife, Katie Payne, and we got a ride. As we boarded the boat, Frank took us through the engine room and took out of his pocket a tape, a magnetic tape, and walked over to a tape recorder that was in the corner of the room. But there was a generator in the room roaring. I mean, you had to almost shout to be able to be heard above it. And he threaded the tape across the heads of the recorder. And he hit the on switch and he put some headphones on his head and adjusted the gains. And then leaning forward and putting the headphones on my head, he said, I think these are humpback whales. And shouting to be heard over the roar of this thing. And what I heard completely blew my mind. I had never heard anything in nature that was remotely as extraordinary a performance. It instantly seemed just dead obvious that here finally was something that could get enough of the attention of the world and make it possible to get people concerned about whales. People knew at the time that a whale was a big blubbery animal and that's about it. At the time, we were killing 33,000 large whales, baleen whales, each year. But it was dead obvious that whales were on the brink of extinction. I decided that I wanted to make a record almost at once. What I decided is the world has to hear this. I mean, that's going to make a difference, a huge difference. That record took off and it became the most successful recording of, of natural history sounds ever. A lot of people weep when they hear these sounds. It hits them emotionally. And I've never wept when hearing them, but I've come damn close. And I thought to myself, this is how I'm going to spend my life. We're trying to translate whale speak. Do I think it's going to be the same sort of full, rich language that humans have? No, I certainly don't. But I think it will have some very complex and interesting things. I would love to ask them simple things, but I would say, you know, sing or again. Sorry would be a good word to say. And once a whale speaks to humanity, no matter how simple its message, it has a chance, I think, to get the attention of the world in a way that it just desperately needs to have. And once that happens, I think all sorts of change will occur. And once change begins to happen, I've noticed it happens so fast that all you can do is just watch. Once that begins, then I am filled with hope.
Roger Payne is the biologist behind Songs of the Humpback Whale. He died last weekend at the age of 88. This piece was produced by WBUR's Barbara Moran. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Vipar Fernandez in Alameda, California.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video chat or phone at betterhelp.com-public.
I think it's an open question as to whether or not a program like this, an investigatory program, can have a real effect on a restaurant business where bad behavior continues to be a persistent problem.
I'm Sabrina Tavernise. That's today on the Daily from the New York Times.
Join us for the Daily starting at 6:30 weekdays on Radio IQ.
Support comes to Radio IQ in part from Flora Pettit, Attorneys at Law, business and litigation attorneys, providing practical and responsive advice to clients throughout Virginia. Charlottesville and Harrisonburg offices, fplegal.com.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Stand and join us in a moment of silence. And immediately following, we'll go into the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please join me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for June 13th, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday at 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokecountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A, opening ceremonies. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Norworth?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Mrs. Hooker?
Here. Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of the agenda item. Do any board members have anything they want to postpone or add to? Mr. Kaywood?
No changes, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Lubek?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item C, proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, and awards. Item one, Public Technology Institute Solutions Award Presentation. Mr. Bill Hunter, Director of Communications and Information Technology. Welcome, Mr. Hunter.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I'm actually here today in my capacity as the Vice Chair of the Executive Council of the Public Technology Institute. PTI was formed in 1971 to explore how emerging technology could help local government. County of Roanoke's been a member of PTI since 2014. So annually, they recognize achievement in technology for local government. And this year, our GIS department was recognized for two different awards. David, would you introduce your folks, please?
Yes, sir. I have going from my left to the right Darren Jones, GIS analyst two, Tracy Lee, GIS analyst two, and Ms. Kelly Dooley, GIS analyst one.
So in the winning category was our glow fiber illumination area application that has shown citizens where the fiber optic projects are going to keep up with it. And I think I'm going to hand this to Darren.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And the second is a significant achievement for our 2022 Legislative Redistricting Web Application. And I think I'm going to hand this one to Kelly. So now if I could put my comm IT director hat on, I will also tell you that those two awards were recognized by the National Association of Counties this year, along with the GIS Activities Dashboard and the GIS Automation for Potential Economic Development. I'm sure you'll hear about that later from NACO, spoiler alert. So to show you how these things serve the citizens, I got a email today through Mary Martinez, one of our Ashley's All-Stars over in General Services, who happened to be working the front desk out here. And a citizen came in and been several places trying to find out where she could get a sample ballot. So using the technology that this crew set up, Mary was not only able to log in, find her precinct for, find her a sample ballot, and send her happily along the way. So then, just out of curiosity, Mary decided to try the mobile app and passed along her compliments that it works spectacularly as well. So now, if you have any questions for it, we're happy to take them.
I know that this technology is fabulous and your work has been great. And we are deeply appreciative of all that you have done for us. It's proven to be successful by these outstanding awards. I know I've personally used the, the ballot information, which precinct are you voting in and all those things for many of my citizens. So we're deeply appreciative of the work that you've done. Any other board member comments?
Yeah, I'd like to comment, Madam.
Yes, sir.
Chair, yeah, that's a great piece of work. It was a, all because of the redistricting every 10 years. And actually, it was the later year, I think, because of COVID. But one thing I noticed on Saturday, when someone called me saying they didn't think they could vote for so-and-so, I said, wait a minute, where do you live? I pulled their address up, using the voter application tool. And not only did it show their address and who they were, but it also had a button for to click for sample ballot. And so I clicked the sample ballot button. I said, no, I'm looking at it right here. You can do this and vote for these folks. And so I think that's just a great added value to that system. So congratulations on not only your work, but on the awards you've received, not only today, but for national counties. I understand Roanoke County, I think, has six awards in Austin, Texas. And I do hope someone's going to Austin, Texas to pick up those awards.
Are you volunteering?
Well, let me tell you what, I'll go if the county will fly me back to Myrtle Beach. But anyway, good work.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Peters.
Besides the comments that have already been made, I'm going to make a statement that, you know, our GIS, GIS system, I think, is fabulous. I use it every day in my work as I'm looking at properties and so on and so forth. But I'll tell you, and I also use a lot of our neighboring jurisdictions. I use theirs as well. And I'll tell you what, ours is fabulous. So good work. Thank you for everything you do and keep doing it.
Absolutely, Mr. Peters.
Thank you for all the hard work you do. I've used both of those systems to respond to citizens that contact me. And I think it's really nice that we're able to secure awards, national awards, that other people outside of Roanoke County recognizes the great work you do. So thank you.
Absolutely, let's take some pictures.
Excellent.
We know we're the best and everybody else knows we're the best.
Sorry, guys, I would include you, but your sports coats were just too bright today. Just grab side of the board. You need three more. You got a yellow one and a pink one, so you need three more every day of the week.
Kelly, in here, right here in front of me.
And item D, new business resolution, canceling the 3:00 PM session of the June 27, 2023 meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Lubek?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last December, the board, by resolution, established a meeting schedule for the 2023 calendar year, which scheduled a meeting for 3:00 PM and for 7:00 PM on June 27 of 2023. And because of a reduced agenda, it has been proposed that the board cancel the meeting to be held at 3:00 PM, but only hold the meeting at 7:00 PM. And Madam Clerk has prepared a resolution to that effect.
Great. Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item E, first reading of ordinances, ordinance accepting funds in the amount of $312,504 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating such funds for use by the Roanoke County Police Department for school resource officers. Michael Poindexter, Chief of Police, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and board members. We are in our second year of our grant for, from DCJS. And currently, we have five officers hired and we're working towards hiring more officers.
Great. And our goal is eight?
Our goal is eight. And we have received a letter that we may have received a second grant for another eight officers.
That's awesome.
So we're working on both right now.
That is great news. And so are there any questions for a chief?
Just, just a comment, appreciate all your work in getting the grants, but more importantly, the, the speed which you are pursuing the hiring of additional people for the schools. We, we very much appreciate it and I know many citizens do as well.
Well, we're going to continue working towards that.
Thank you.
I see a lot of advertising and a lot of your work, PR work, to get the word out in the hiring processes. I have taken note of it, so I know that you are really working hard. Any other comments?
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for June 27, 2023? Mr. Peters?
I'll make a motion, yeah.
And a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, this has really been a high priority. We certainly appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number two, ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement for operation of the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection. Jessica Beamer, Assistant Director of Finance and Management Services, and Mr. Lubek, County Attorney, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am here today on behalf of the Fiscal Affairs Committee for the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection to discuss with you the proposed intergovernmental agreement. As you might remember, RCACP was historically an open intake facility managed by the Roanoke Valley SPCA. It was managed on behalf of the surrounding localities and each locality worked separately with them to help animals who had been abandoned, neglected, roamed at large, or were surrendered by their owners. In December of 2012, a 10-year intergovernmental agreement was introduced by the cities of Roanoke, the counties of Bodatot and Roanoke, and the town of Vinton. This allowed the localities to assume the operational responsibility in order to streamline and create operational efficiency and effectiveness. The current service population is about 238,000 citizens with an annual pet population of approximately 4,000 served a year. Since inception of this agreement, we at Roanoke County have served as the fiscal agent. And the board recently approved a new fiscal agent agreement that will run through June of 2026. The previous ordinance was officially signed in 2013 and was for a 10-year term, which expires at the end of this month. The new agreement before you was drafted by the Roanoke County Attorney's Office with input from the participating localities. It will require an ordinance with a first and a second reading. The changes are highlighted in the board report, but I'd also like to go over a few of them with you today. The first is the removal of the town of Vinton as a participating entity. By state code, towns are no longer required to provide a public animal shelter. Through discussions with the town of Vinton and with the revision of the town and county gain sharing, great, gain sharing agreement back in 2019, the county now assumes financial responsibility for the town's portion of their animal shelter responsibilities. This translates into the agreement by reallocating the town's 4% ownership percentage to Roanoke County for a total county ownership of 26%. The new split by locality is Roanoke City 58%, Roanoke County 26%, and Bodatot County 16%. This reallocation also reallocates the Vinton board position to Roanoke County. The new structure would be two board positions for Roanoke County, two for Roanoke City, and one position for the county of Bodatot, which is a total of the five board positions. Other small updates include changing the verbiage from executive committee to the board of directors and updating verbiage from pound to animal shelter to match the state code. A termination date of June 30, 2028 is in this agreement, and it also includes automatic five-year extensions. And the last change that I'd like to highlight includes the allowance of virtual meetings with the approval of a virtual meeting policy. And it also allows the meetings to be less than quarterly if desired and agreed upon by the majority of the board members. In looking at the next steps, the RCACP had a meeting this morning to review and approve this agreement as distributed. Bodatot County and Roanoke City will be approving a similar ordinance this month. And I recommend moving forward with a second reading on June 27, 2023. Are there any questions I can answer for you? I also have Peter Lubek, County Attorney, and Mike Warner in the back, interim executive director, director, who are happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Ms. Beamer? Yes, Mr. Peters?
So why is Roanoke City at 58% and we're at 26?
So those calculations are based on the actual usage. And it is based on a calendar year calculation. So Roanoke City historically has been around 56%. I did look as a calendar year and 2022, they were at 58%. So it's still right around that level. So they are a little bit higher.
And Mr. Peters, if I could add, that's been relatively consistent since it was formed. So back in the original agreement, there was a similar proportionality between the localities. And I think that the cost of establishing the facility were split at that manner as well.
So, so the funding is, is, or the expenses are?
So the funding is, or the expenses are split that way as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's based on the, I guess, utilization for the past year becomes the basis on which you pay for the upcoming year, so you have a chance to budget, and that kind of rolls year after year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions, Mr. North? So I guess my only question is, with the 26%, what does that translate to in dollars? Because our portion was the 26%, correct?
It is. I don't know that number off the top of my head, because that is operational and there's capital portion of that. Mike, do you know that off the top of your head for the county? I can get that for you, though.
That's fine, that's fine, thank you. So is there a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for June 27?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes, thank you. Item three is ordinance amending Article II definitions and use types, Article III district regulations, and Article IV use and design standards of the Roanoke County zoning ordinance. Mr. Philip Thompson, Director of Planning, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Earlier this year, back in February and in March, the Board of Supervisors adopted two resolutions requesting the Planning Commission to look at two items, the county's cluster subdivision ordinance, as well as the industrial use type definitions in Section 30-29-6 of the Roanoke County zoning ordinance. So staff has been working with the Planning Commission on these issues. In addition, there are proposed amendments to the county zoning ordinance regarding commercial kennels, multiple dog permits, and home occupations. So the proposed amendments would add a definition for data center, add and amend the definitions for multiple dog permit, commercial kennel, and industry type one. All those are in Article II, which is the definitions and use types. We would add single-family dwelling attached, the cluster subdivision option, and a single-family dwelling detached with the cluster subdivision option as a permitted use in the AR, Agroresidential District in Article III, that deals with district standards. And then amend the use and design standards for home occupations type one and type two, and for single-family dwelling attached and detached, cluster subdivision option. We'd also amend the accessory uses for industrial use types in Article IV, which is the use and design standards article. So the planning commission did hold a public hearing on these amendments last week, last Tuesday, June 6. There were no citizens to speak on the proposed amendments, and the planning commission did recommend approval of the amendments to the county zoning ordinance. So staff recommends that the Board approve the first reading of the ordinance and amend to amend the Roanoke County zoning ordinance and schedule the public hearing, the second reading for June 27. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? I have one quick question regarding the cluster ordinance. Was the development world contacted, I'm sure, and there was a lot of interaction regarding the cluster ordinance?
So we did, yeah, I think some of this initiated with Mr. Alexander Boone. So we did reach out to Mr. Boone, and we sat down with him, and we kind of went through and tried to understand what some of the barriers are to the current regulations and what would make it more desirable to use that. So we did sit down with him and go through both. We looked at two things, one, more flexibility and give more options, and two, streamlining the process.
Good. Excellent. Thank you. So is there a motion to approve the first reading and schedule the public hearing and second reading for June 27, 2023?
Madam Clerk, I would move the approval of ordinance E3, and let's schedule a public hearing on the 27th of June.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Item F, are there any board members that have an appointment that has not yet been given to the clerk? There being none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any board member that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Item H is citizen comments and communications. Are there, is there anyone that wishes to speak? I don't have anyone signed up to speak. So moving on to item I, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
Make a motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Item J, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Mahoney?
I just have one item, Madam Chair. Back on May 25, I had the opportunity to represent the board, and I think also, county administrator also attended. There was a ceremony out at the sewage treatment plant. And it was a ceremony to recognize a public-private partnership that the Water Authority and Roanoke Gas is engaged in, where they would take, I guess, when you treat whatever we flush down our toilets, there's stuff left over. And that stuff left over can be kind of nasty, but out of that, you can have a renewable energy source, that is, natural gas. And so with this partnership between Roanoke Gas and the authority, you're able to renew, have a renewable energy source. It's very exciting. We have a lot of dignitaries there. And it's my understanding that this is the first such facility in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Unfortunately, I don't know if it got a lot of media coverage, but I really think this is a significant step forward. We talk a lot about renewable energy, and we talk about recycling. This is a perfect example of this kind of initiative. And the other part of it is, you have a private company, Roanoke Gas, partnering with public entities. And in that public-private partnership, you do really good things. So I just want to report that it was an exciting day. If you have not been out to the sewage treatment plant, it is an interesting place. Many years ago, I did tour of it, and you can see a lot of the equipment that has been constructed in order to take advantage of this biogas, renewable, natural gas system. And it's very exciting, very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Radford is not here, Mr. Peters.
I don't really have a whole lot today, or actually anything today. I just want to remind everybody that we have a voice, and no matter what side of the aisle you sit on, next Tuesday will be our primaries to get out and vote. Again, it is the one blessing we have in our country, we get to vote on who we put in office. I know in the Vinton District, we have the 39th District and the Clerk of the Court to vote on. But anyway, I encourage everybody to get out and vote next week. Can't make your voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I voted last Saturday. That was a long line down there Saturday, walked in and walked out in about five minutes. So sometimes you can avoid the crowd by voting in person early. On May 25, Sonia Waddell of the Richmond, Virginia Federal Reserve Office spoke at the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission meeting about our regional economy. And several points that were made during the presentation was, the Roanoke area is seeing a 0.7% growth from February to April this year. Inflation is being driven by both the service industry, but also apartment rental price growth has escalated. Some future cooling is likely in the business sector than the consumer sector. And in the southeast region represented by the Richmond Federal Reserve Office, some employment layoffs in construction, hospitality, retail, and leisure segments are predicted later in the year. But this is like a moving target, though. Everything she said two weeks ago is probably obsolete today, or will be soon, because the economy is percolating pretty good right now. On May 30, Supervisor Peters and I attended a meeting with school board members to discuss with Delegate Chris Head state grant funding for our new CTE school. And we also discussed the formula grant process as well. And we're looking forward to hearing back from him soon. On June 4, my wife and I attended the Ironman event and watched a family friend, Steven Olson of Vinton, cross the finish line to meet his personal goal of finishing under seven hours for a time of six hours and 40 minutes in his first Ironman event, which he started training for last November. On June 9, we attended the Explorer Park Roanoke County Concert Series on the lawn at Explorer Park to the music of Empty Bottles with 70s and 80s music. There were over 500, I believe, 50 people in attendance. That was quite a crowd, quite an event. Everyone was well behaved, and I look forward to the future months at that event. And I want to put a challenge out to Roanoke County staff and administration. I think you all need to come to that event if you haven't already. I know some of you have, but it is well worth it to see what we give to the citizens and how they enjoy it. And it's some good music and fun times. Lastly, on Sunday, June 11, I attended the U.S. Army 248th Anniversary and Flag Day Celebration at Vinton Moore Memorial. The guest speaker was VMI Superintendent Major General Cedric Winds, a graduate of the Institute. Flag Day is tomorrow, June 14, and let's remember Old Glory by flying our American flag symbolizing the land of the free and home of the brave. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. North. I have just a couple of comments before we continue on with our next items of business. I got a letter, I was actually copied on a letter, from Mr. Brendan Quark, the CEO and President of USA Cycling. It was addressed to the Governor of Virginia, Governor Yonkin, and he was speaking of how impressed he was with Virginia's Blue Ridge. The beauty of the region, the amount of regional support surpassed what he experienced with other communities. He mentioned he would like to pursue American bike racing to Virginia in even bigger and better ways. I just thought that was really exciting. That's good news for us specifically with economic development and Parks and Recreation. You guys are doing a lot right. And then I have a couple of announcements. I know my fellow board members enjoy hearing this from me. We have some state champions.
Cut the mic. I thought we were past the moment.
No, no, no. We've got more good news. Northside High School, their softball team was just fabulous, and they won the Class Three State Championship Girl Softball. So congratulations to them. Glenver High School, Class Two championships in Boys Tennis, Boys Soccer, and Boys Track. I mean, we had a fantastic year. So a lot of good things going on in West County, and we have some great young people coming forward. I appreciate the comments from Mr. Peters about voting. It is so important for you to participate. Please don't neglect that privilege and let your voice be heard. I also attended the Ironman event. It impresses me so much. It was absolutely fabulous, and I really enjoyed that. So thank you to all, especially Parks and Rec, who had such a big part in making that happen. So we'll move on with our meeting. We have a work session to go forward with, K1 Work Sessions, a joint work session with the Roanoke County Economic Development Authority, EDA, and the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors to discuss economic development on state, regional, and local levels. Jason Elkubey, President and CEO of the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, John Hall, Executive Director of the Roanoke Regional Partnership, Richard L. Haywood, County Administrator, and Megan Baker, Director of Economic Development. From there, we will go into a closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia as follows. I will move to go into closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711.a5, Discussion Concerning the Expansion of Existing Businesses or Industries Where No Previous Announcement Has Been Made of the Business's or Industry's Interest in Locating or Expanding Its Facilities in the Community, namely in the Catawba, Hollins, and Vinton Magisterial Districts, and Section 2.2-3711.a1, Discussion, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining, or Resignation of Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body, namely the County Administrator's Performance Evaluation. In Section 2.2-3711.a1, Discussion, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining, or Resignation of Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees of Any Public Body, namely the County Attorney's Performance Evaluation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. And so now the board will recess to the third floor for work session and closed session. Thank you.